I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you want, should I? I can shut the door. There's gonna be a lot of death being here for the next fifteen. You got, thanks, Joe. Yeah, so we have to move along. So we rolled along. We've got Lauren and I think we obviously got an introvert. Gets from Nico, Principal, Principal Ken Anderson are also in attendance. We have any additions to the agenda?
Well, we're just gonna make some adjustments to it because Nico was able to make it this evening. I just wanted to be respectful of their time and we're gonna move them up. Well, actually, we're gonna have their report kind of with us right away before the middle school and high school report. So it's just to adjust where that's fitting and just to be respectful.
Yeah. So do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? We have seconds.
A second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
I oppose.
Carries. Number five, public comments and rebel recognition. I feel like there's a lot of things going on right now. I know the speech team had some great success in Underwood this last weekend. The play they got. Fourth, I think. Yeah. My daughter was in, so they were robbed, of course, but. Two dollars, so doubly robbed. I know basketball team's been going well. We had. Or came the whole time waiting for.
School history.
School history. Wrestling sessions are this Thursday, I think, in Detroit Lakes. We're hosting by a match, but it went our way against the. It's all. But we're there.
We'll get next year.
I think the robotics team had some great success as well. And I just want to give a shout out to whoever's doing the updates on the BZF school page. Just fantastic. There's so many great things going on and it's nice to see that out there on Facebook and also.
Tris has done the bulk of that.
Yes, just really. Any other rebel recognition?
I would say to the varsity players who went down to the elementary and made those kids mistake where they did a LTRIBU. They did a fantastic job and. I saw lots of big smiles on all the Facebook pages and pictures and things. And of course, heard it at home as well.
Yeah.
I heard there was a school dance.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how that went. They don't have an older kid, but thanks for putting that on for all the staff and for the kids to enjoy. Have something safe and fun today. It was a great success.
My kids enjoyed it.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same thing. Any other rebel recognition or comments? We didn't have any comments.
No. Last week was school council week. National school council week. So thank you to all the amazing school councils we have. Makes a big difference in our school.
Wednesday is school resource survey.
And we'll be talking about school board recognition shortly. Not that you guys care about school board recognition, but well, that is what I reported.
So we'll go on to number six. I think we'll skip to six point four part D I. Well, so you guys, if you remember, it was, I don't know how many months ago, Trevor Marla joined us to one of the school board meetings when we had the extension of the contracts and whatnot. And so they came and we got with the Nico construction and talked to us that day. Obviously now we have them taking over our shop or started our shop and doing that. They're also taking over the entire project as our new CM. And so I just wanted to make sure that. I was hoping everybody could meet him. I know today there's a couple missing, but I just thought for them to see you guys and for them to give us the report sometimes is better than me. And if you had questions, I answered some of your questions, but if you had anything for them, I just really appreciate both of them. Number one, keeping you up to date and informed with the budget. And then just the project itself, we've, they've kind of got into. What you guys already know what it is and they were a part of the Glendon project previously, so they kind of knew what that was like. So as we wrap this project up with punch lists, et cetera, they're fully aware of what that looks like and what it is. Obviously, they're working with the shop as well. But Dilworth has been its own. Challenge. And so I really appreciate both of them or Nico Construction coming on and. And helping us with it. I'll just leave it like that. So I just thought I'd give them the floor a little bit just to share kind of where we're at. It doesn't need to be long. We didn't bring 150 slides. Anyway, just to share all of that, and you guys, if you have questions for that, please, please ask. So the document that I put in front of you, this one here. That is something that Marla works with Marcus and I on a monthly basis, kind of never rat with the budget. Who needs what, the payoffs and whatnot. Obviously, we're getting into paying retainage. And so Trevor and Marla have been working through that with all the contractors and okay, are they done? Is there anything left? What don't we have? This is where we kind of found some of the bonding things that I've shared with you about and that working for that too. So yeah, that's, if you want to maybe just talk about that a little bit or the overall project or Dilworth, I'd like you guys, I'll give you the.
Well, we'd like to thank you for inviting us to help out. It's a, it's a lot of work, but it also, we're grateful for that, that you can step in and. Help the kids get back to keenness, you know, what's important to us, that we can just get the kids in. And then we give you a quality building, you know, try to clean up what needs to be cleaned up and just bring everything home. To be honest, we've been on our heels a little bit. It was a handful. You know, the Dilworth site getting up to speed. This project was a lot easier because we were pretty sure of the duration. So we kind of knew a lot of the answers and what needed to be done. As far as the Glendon site, we're trying to prioritize the important stuff. So Dilworth has taken a lot of our time, but there's still things to close off with bit pack one and bit pack two. And our site superintendent's on it and we're kind of taking notes and getting some materials ordered that Shannon requested, just minor changes here and there. To, you know, to get this rolling. Once we get to hit our goal over here, we can just keep on moving and just get out of your hair, sure you're tired of seeing construction work. As far as the shop addition. You know, we're fucking along right now. Probably set. I'd like to say we're gonna be done in two weeks. We just recently found out we're waiting on a breaker for the electrical panel and unshutting for the 17th of next month, which is unfortunate. But with that, conversations with the electrician on site, he thinks he can turn over half the building if he does some temp wiring and. He's contacting the inspector and his guys to make sure there's room to at least hopefully get the metal shop portion open. So, you know, trying to make the best out of a bad situation. It's hope it's still affecting us a few times, but it's, it's takes the fun out of construction when it's.
Whereas, just, just to give you guys a little perspective, the electrician with this piece that he needs for the electrical box was supposed to be in his hands November 18th. Then it went to December. You know, 18th is their lucky number or whatever. And so he was fairly, I mean, the last time he was very confident, it'll be February, we're gonna get it. And we walked, he walked in right before the meeting last week and said. I got the message today, March 18th or whatever. So are you kidding me?
So it's. He's not ideal.
So we're trying to find it somewhere else, but.
Yeah. That's terrible. You know, you're gonna have a brand new look through the windows. There's a missed clean shop and it's just.
No power.
No power.
Turn on the sun.
But we're gonna try to find a solution to that and we're just communicating a lot of kinds of scenes and where our options and reaching out to other contractors we've worked with in the past. Just to see if they might by chance have something in their own. It's not looking good, other than maybe coming up with a temp solution. And Jared with the quota was. Optimistic, but he wasn't gonna commit anything at this point until. That's closer to it. We're too familiar with guests. Here it is. We don't wanna get you up here and then shoot you down, let's be honest, that we shoot for. Not moving to Dilworth. We're pushing extremely hard to get occupancy in the main corridor and then the admin lane. To, so for one, that Shannon can have his crew with him. And for two, you guys ready for the big basketball tournament coming up on the 24th. So, you know, we've had good. All the trades on site are, have been more than welcoming to us stepping in, which is, is great. You know, it's. Communicated well. There's no pushback. Everybody wants to perform for the school. They all kind of sighed, but thank you. This is great. And we're just moving forward. We started off the last meeting, who's waiting on an answer from the owner architect or Stan? And nobody was waiting on an answer. So that's a good, good sign that we should be no holdups. Let's just get it done and make our day. On Tuesday, that's when we have the tour with the state inspector for life safety. So that's the day we're gonna know. What's, what needs to be corrected. We have a few days to cross the Ts and bow the Is and then, you know, bring on the kids, have fun. And then moving past that, we'll have a few things to do in the school. We have to use the numbers left to be buttoned up, but like I say, we're trying to prioritize just to. Get that corridor open, drop the kids off at the north door, have staff where they want and kind of open there and we'll work backwards and punch the building out, clean it up, give you guys a nice respect this way. Budget wise, Marla's put. Many weekends that they get caught up to give you guys a realistic budget of here's where we're at. No shocks, no. Where this come from, where that come from. We kind of went at the approach is what we found is on here, plus a little worst case scenario for what we know. I'm sure we may find a few other little things that we're going to find in paperwork that may not have been across since June or. Auctionals win, but she's pretty confident that this, this is it. You know, unless we ask for some more stuff from the school does. Few changes here and there.
Yeah, the nice thing, so when Marla comes over and visits with Marcus, most of the time I'm in those meetings too with them. So when Marcus puts together our construction budget, that's a part of our. Concept agenda, you can kind of look through that. I can talk about that a little bit too, but. As he gets these dialed in from Marla, then that obviously translates into that document. So you can kind of see where we're at. So it's just really nice to have this. Hope to say constant communication as to where we're at, especially now as we're trying to finish it up. Are we good? Are we good? You know, this site, that site, the shop, and this just kind of reassures us all the time. So then when it's time to make a decision on a $30,000 change with electricity or with electricians, like, well, well, no. We, we're not making that change. Or do you want to make this upgrade? No. Or yes, because we have that little bit of a window or that would, you know, it's kind of like our shop. We had to make some additional changes with the electrical in order to meet the needs of our equipment. And their welding and all those things, which is great. It's just, it wasn't in the original plan, but because we have all the information, you know, making an informed decision and know that we're gonna be okay when I say yes. Or the, more importantly for me, is what am I saying yes to? We've had a lot of conversations, Trevor and I, about. Saying yes in the past and then finding out that that meant more than that or less than that, or that's not what I said yes to. Oh, yeah, that's tied together. Okay, wait a minute. How would I know that's tied together? And that sort of information and the communication now has been. Very transparent, very upfront. And so I know what I'm saying yes or not. So I do really appreciate that part too. So.
And yeah, and having the financial end of it, this was kind of prepared as first case scenario, this is what we're looking at right now. Says every pending change that we're aware of at all, whether it's gonna be approved or not. So we just threw it all out there. This was case. So now this week, we're gonna go through fine tuning and process, any changes that need to be processed and then. The, the list starts to get a little shorter because you're narrowing it down and then the numbers get more informed every time you see this document. So we're getting there. Feel pretty confident that the overall totals you're looking at at the bottom, we shouldn't go over those numbers. Again, this is what we're aware of, but this is a lead, letting reading documents. We will update this and get it back again and again and again until. And hopefully, when we run over to your smear, which is.
The nice thing too, and Marla, correct me if I go wrong here, but the cover page, right? And then there's two other pages and those basically are a breakdown of the same thing. It's just a landscape instead of a portrait. So some people like looking at this way, it's easier to break it down. It is the same information, correct?
It is the same. The last big one is just my little cheat sheet, it was optional writing, which the columns are not on this one. My checklist for the proper close up activities that are needed before we can revise retainages. So which bonding is one of those columns and then I'll be able to shrink that down to see what was bonded and what was not. But it's a matter of collecting the proper application for close up, making a warranty, so that the school just has a daily for every subcontractor. I am, this is a whole.
You guys have any questions for them?
So I guess my question is, what kind of percentages do we have left to do? What's the ballpark we can be a stick of? Honestly, though. I think the shop addition should be seen and waiting the first week of next month for a breaker. I really do. I had a lengthy conversation with my superintendent on the way down here and I want to know how he's feeling and that's, he's pushing it every day just to get done. He's been here almost two years and he just wants to. But let's, let's try something different. Bit package one and two with the rest of the school. You may see some people in here once every two weeks just tidying up as we're getting punch list items and pinpointing things that need to be done, but that, that. That can extend for your entire warranty period where we get a phone call or somewhere that this needs to be adjusted or that. But the disruptiveness is, is pretty much handled at this, this location. Dilworth, within eight weeks, realistically. And I'm giving myself some time because I'd rather take, you know, yell sooner. Yeah, eight weeks, minutes on the punch list, getting architects to walk through, getting all, you know, your guys' reps walking through point, things are touching up paint. Making sure things are clean. And once again, we'll, we'll still be in here. Maybe we have some long lead time items, get a couple corridor door frames. That's, that could be six, seven, eight weeks out before them frames even show up. So something like that, we're gonna try to coordinate with Shannon and do during the school break because they're in a corridor. We don't want kids getting hurt and just schedule everybody to come in and get it done and get our.
You know, when you say eight weeks to the other party, I heard his opening statement was to get that corridor analysis, you know, the next few weeks to get that up and get the states down because. Let's face it, that's gonna be a game changer for the Dilworth site. Just to get that opened up and available. Then those music rooms, I think they're a week or two after that. They should become, you know, available. This media center is probably right with those music rooms, I would say.
I just think we're gonna have a bulk of things that's still need to be done this summer.
No, yeah, good question.
No one else will be asked that because it's already been going on. No. Yeah, no. No, no, that is not, one of eight weeks from today, it's, it's music rooms are done, cabinets are set and we're, we're cleaning up. We're working on punch list stuff.
After the meeting too, I know we have a last meeting tonight too. Boys and girls level header here tonight. Ask if I bring this room instead of the other one, but. You, if you want to walk down to the shop, I mean, it's. The one thing that's nice when we meet every week, I go walk in there and go, oh, nice, this was done, that was done. Same with Dilworth. I mean, it's, if you guys want to stop by anytime, it's, it's different. I'm just saying, it just feels different. It's closer and. Yeah, it just feels better. So, just speaking.
Yeah, we're, we're close. We feel good. Not on our end. We don't, we don't feel like we're overselling the area or anything. We're just trying to be honest and. Set real expectations instead of it'll be done this month. It just doesn't happen, doesn't.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate your business. Shannon's been a delight to work with. Good, hey, he's a good, you got a good man there. Yep, definitely.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Do everything we can here to bash it possible, get these kids back from the schools, develop the construction awareness.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Yep. Have a great night. Don't want to. Yeah, let's go to that. So, so Ken, just so you know, because we're being recorded, we have that so it can be recorded. So they've asked everybody that presents now to have a podium. We don't have a podium, but we do have a music stand for you.
They got fired first.
They, they did because we hired them, but they're going like, we're hoping they're doing you stay. Did that sound right? I don't know. Thank you for presenting.
Um, as you know, we're well into our second semester in the middle school here. We've been starting to work on next year's schedule already. We've had some conversations with the area principals almost there doing stuff. So Katie and I have been looking at that and trying to how, how can we tweak ours and make ours better to get. More electives and offerings to our students. A little bit in limbo right now because of staffing issues. As you know, we lost some teachers in the high school this year. So that affected the middle school where we moved our industrial tech up to high school to fill in. And we had to adjust in the middle school because of that, but teacher stepped up and said, I actually had to move a teacher to a different grade level. Yep, very willingly proposed it to both of them and they came up and said, no, I want to do this and we'll make it work. Increase some class sizes and decrease some offerings there, but. Staff adjusted very well to that and students did as well. So appreciate them working with us and I think. With losing two full-time teachers, I think it had minimal impact, probably not as little impact on our students as it could. So. Everybody adjusted on the fly with that. So that was good. Been working a little bit on the ALC or AOP and you'll talk about that. We went and did a site visit over a room, checked on theirs and talked about that. And then also we had our winter workshop, our MASP workshop down in the cities and attended some conferences there and I, one that was really intriguing. And it's ran by our site team too and they're kind of excited about it. So we're gonna do some more planning on that, but. Basically, it's a way to give help to our students that are struggling or failing in class instead of what do we do for them? Well, we just keep moving them on as the year progresses and then we send them to summer school. We don't do any help within the meantime. We're gonna try and pilot this a little bit this spring, I hope. And if it works and it goes well, then hopefully we get these kids help in real time instead of waiting till after the fact. And then it's also a way to reward our kids that are doing well in class too. So. Sal St. Paul is the guy that spoke on it and their program is off the charts. We're, we're not going to that level by any means, but I think we can do a kind of a modified version of it in the middle school. So we're gonna talk about that and work on that. We have conferences coming up. We have one night of conferences and then a second night. Traditionally here, it's been where they have a workshop night that night. So we will, we work on logistics. So try to run that this spring then. And then teachers will also be doing MCA training because we have testing coming up here shortly. And then also getting our social studies crew together again to give them more time to look at the social studies curriculum, which will be replaced next year. So. They've had several meetings on that already and we'll just continue with that as well. So. Star testing, fifth and sixth grade did star testing again. They did it, do it in the fall. They did it here recently. We've seen some nice, nice growth with our. Fifth grade reading and fifth and sixth grade math. Both our fifth graders went back a little bit with the reading part portion. Or no, our sixth grade did, our sixth grade did, I'm sorry, sixth grade went back. But we also had a bunch of kids that their scores just didn't add up with Barb and Donna. So they've taken a bunch of those kids and retested them. One test, you know, this kid was staying up late tonight, whatever. And then we see those scores come again too. So. Kind of proved to us that, you know, one time, one test, one day, a lot of things can impact that too. So. But Donna and Marla have been doing a fantastic job with that intervention. The teachers love having them there. They've been awesome to work with and whole staff so far this year has been great working with them. Katie has been awesome to work with both for Joe and I. She's getting pulled 100 different directions with athletics and principal stuff and everything. So. She's handled that quite well. She's on vacation now. We'll deserve vacation. So really appreciate her, working with her and. I guess one thing that's been a struggle lately has, we've had a lot of issues on the buses. Is disrespect towards the drivers, altercations with students, vaping incidents. And this seems like it's been escalating lately. The whole morning was, today was bus issue stuff. So it's been an issue, but it's been a frustration. Eileen's on top of it as much as she can be too. Joe and I are working together on it as well. So. But that's been a. You know, kind of went from the bathrooms. I think we kind of got that under control now a little bit and now it's stripped it over to the buses. So we'll keep working at that, plug it away on that too. So. That's what we've been doing. Questions or, you know? Overall, really good year. I can't believe it's starting in the February.
I was gonna ask, how the construction, is that construction issues for middle schools, that count behind you now?
Well, the shop is on our end. You know, and we have that issue with the water leaking and stuff. And then there's some noise issues, but like I said, the teachers have been flexible that are really affected right across the hallway with it. And they kind of understand it's. Might get a little worse before it gets better. And the, and the end is in sight and it's gonna be much better. So, yeah. So had some impact minimal. The heat issue this week, not a lot of impact on our end of the building. It's mostly focused down here. So I blame Joe for that.
Yeah, the heat issues.
No, that's not, some impact, but yeah, minimal for what we've got to do. The teachers have been really great about being flexible with that stuff too.
As you look at schedules for next year. Have you, do you know how many teachers you'd be looking to hire to like increase electives or replace what we've lost?
That's what we're talking about right now. And we've had some preliminary discussions with Miss Constead on that. They wouldn't, you know, spend the dollars to what we can and can't. They wouldn't. And how do we better utilize the staff we do have? I think we could do better. But yeah, we started preliminary schedule to work on now. So made a little progress on it, but there's gonna be some changes to what we're.
Thank you.
Around the six point two, BZF school report.
First, I don't know, last time, whatever, just wanted to say thanks again for coming out to the high school from the elementary side, having. Been in both places for a number of years or whatever. I'm enjoying it, contrary to what you've heard. It's going, but I think it's going well. Coming out here, you don't realize, but you know, talking with Kent, that. Coming out to do principal stuff, we made a pleasure. We wanted to bring electives to the, the kids. We want more opportunities. We want to grow the space. We want to do things, but. While doing that, you really do become an expert in things like glycol that you never thought that you would and being able to. You know, you really, you test how good you are in a reactive mode when you try to be proactive in everything you're doing. A lot of people, unfortunately, in this building will look at negatives and that's all you hear. Probably like to look at the positives and you look at the amount of stuff that's been thrown at us. And we're still standing. It's a testament to kind of the, maybe the structure that we've gotten facing the people that we work with. Sadly, nothing surprises me anymore. And no matter what happens, we're always gonna make it work. Some people don't like it, but we make it work. And that's, we're gonna continue to do that. And I don't think we give our kids enough credit. They've been through COVID and then they jump into a building project for over a couple of years. Not one time have I had to yell at kids for, for being where they're not supposed to. They're respectful to the construction crew. Whether we have something with the roof, something with the heat, they don't, they, they just. They've been great. They've avoided the areas when it was asked into. They've responded well. They let some things just roll off and they continue on with their day. So that's kind of a testament to the kids that we've got here. They've been great. Electives, working with Kent, working with Katie. Katie is so organized. It's, it's nice to have somebody as organized as I and finally. Wow, is this, yeah, she's wired a little bit different. And it's nice because it keeps us kind of, yep, we're, we're. You know, lets us know, okay, remember this and it's like, yep, you got it. But electives, we're working. But electives, we're working with some things beyond our control as far as we think we have things in place and, and all of a sudden then the roof is swept underneath you. So middle school, the minute they've been phenomenal with work with as far as letting us steal. Um, one of their staff members can keep one of our programs that we feel is pretty important. I know it was, you know, not everyone's favorite, but to keep that construction going. Um, we've got a lead on a couple of other possible situations that I don't want to say it's a slam dunk. But if things fall where we hope they are, and maybe some things remain the way they are, we could be fully staffed. And then that in turn is going to be keeping kids in house rather than having them want to jump over to a career academy. We'll have kind of what we get here. That's the goal. Um, doing some things for the, the kids, you know, first ever snowball, you know, typically we do homecoming and we do prom. Well, what snowball does is it allows those kids that are freshmen and sophomore to get all dolled up and then have a little formal thing. Great turnout. I thought it was great. I mean, you, you got a few hiccups here and there, but you know, we don't know. What we don't know unless we try and for the most part, that was a success. We had some pretty good feedback. The other thing too, and I don't know if you get copies of the Rebel Report, we did the media production thing. We wanted the kids to go around and be, do the news. Um, work in progress, you know, it's new, but they're having fun with it with, uh, you know, they're constantly in the office getting these stories that we want to report. And then there's some things like, this is off the record, so you're not going to. You know, it's been a good life. Um, and the last thing, Kent mentioned the A L P. So it's a alternative learning program. A lot of schools, you know, they do an alternative learning center. The difference is the center you're paired up with another district, a program you're standalone. We can still do the same things. Um, what that'll do is, you know, the whole point of that is so we can carry out, you know, our mission, what we want to do. And we're, we're here to serve kids. And right now we, we get into spots where maybe we can't. Well, the whole point is they get a, a different alternative center or a placement where they can get their credits and, and sometimes classroom's not for everybody. So it just gives another option where we can keep them as D G F kids. We keep them in-house. They can get their credits. Um, we can also with this, I mean, there's still a lot of things to decide, but we can keep our funding for the summer now for our summer school. We run it through that and now we're funded for that instead of just writing, checking to have, you know, to sticker on. Um, the first draft was sent to Minnesota Department of Ed. So I sent that and it was promptly sent back. So that closed that. I'm a pretty good writer. So, but that's the game that we play. So it's going to be, hey, what do you mean when you, you know, it's kind of like, here's what we kind of do. This is qualified. We wanted to do more of an independent study rather than, because we can't fully staff it. We know we can't. We don't have the, the space or the numbers. But what we can do is we can offer partial. We can have our licensed teachers come down for a period of the day. And now we can get all the course covered. We can have them in an independent study. Now there are students, they're staying at D G F. They're not going elsewhere. And now we retain that. Also being a program, once we get established, we would have the opportunity to reach out and see if Barnesville, Holly, Morehead. Hey, do you have anyone that need credit recovery? Because we're running into, uh, Morehead fills up. Morehead takes care of Morehead first and that's fine. Well, D G F, we're going to take care of D G F first. And then if we have space now, we can look at, you know, extending an olive branch if we want to. But, uh, the goal is to have something in place. Budget for something like this would be, right now, zero added onto what we currently do. If we can just schedule some of our core teachers, whether they're middle school or high school, just to be down there. And then we have the space here. So we won't be renting anything. So optimistic would be a zero dollar budget. Um, realistic would be have to do a halftime. Maybe an admin assistant or someone just to be, to be down there and maybe get some dividers or whatever. So Kent and I have been talking about that and seeing kind of where it goes. We just got to get the application. Um, once we get it, go back and forth, get it approved, then we apply for the independent study piece, which is kind of what we really want. And then we'll take care of that. The lady down at M D E has actually been great to work with. She's one of those where it just keep throwing these back. We'll drag you through until you get the right answers. Kind of a thick deal. So, um, hopefully that's kind of a reality. Next time we report, like in the fall, and all it's going to do is it's basically a, another, another layer of, hey, hey, we're helping kids. We were keeping kids and I don't get phone calls and get lectured about how enrollment's down and I gotta be better. So.
Can I ask a question while you're mid stop here?
Yes.
So if the kids like failing English, you, maybe this might be an option, like if they need a.
Correct.
A lit credit and then they would do that same curriculum or would you, is there like an online?
So like the Apex, yeah. So that's the independent.
So there would need to be that instructor that they.
Right. So we have, so let's say, all right, if Mike is severely credit deficient, hey, what's he going to do? Well, I'm going to stay after school and do this and you're going to pick up, or I'm going to jump ship and I'm going to go fully into a yes program and ALC at Morehead. Well, now we just, we just lost that kid.
Right.
Whereas if, why can't we just keep them in-house and they still have, you know, part of the reason do they have access to technology? Yeah, you're going to be in our building. So you're going to have all the amenities basically that our, our other kids have. You're just going to be in a totally different program that's, that's geared for you. And everyone will come with, uh, their own learning plan and things like that, which is you have to by mistake. So, hey, here's what, you know, here's what you need. You need this, 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 and this. Well, now let's individual, you know, basically every kid's getting their own personal plan. Here's what we're going to do. Here's the plan in place and here's when you're going to graduate with your peers at the correct time. And I think that's a huge, um, selling point for us. Why, you know, why D G F? Well, I'll tell you why. Because we can do this and we can put some, some in place to.
Can they potentially stay with some of their peers in classes where they are finding success? Or is this like ALC where you would be completely?
Yes and no. So we, when we went and we toured Perum, not to compare us to them, but there is that option. There's that option of, hey, we're going to get you in our A L P in the morning, but you know what? Nicole really likes welding. We've got welding in the afternoon and that's really kind of.
Those were the electives I was thinking now that we're.
It is. And so we've got that option where they actually, some will stay on campus for that afternoon and they take classes in the gym. So.
Would this also be middle schools or high schools?
That's an, I mean, that's another option. So you, there's some stipulations when you get a little bit younger. But it can be whatever we want it to be. We can say this is a seven, twelve A L P. And with that, just know that that seventh and eighth grade, they're going to have a little bit different rules than nine through twelve. So we'll get to.
Will necessarily be the full school day or just?
We actually get to name the calendar and we get to name, uh, their learning day.
Sure.
So if different places do it different, different ways. And then, you know, Morehead swinging, you know, with a little bit bigger stick because they've got standalone staff where they're fully staffed and they've got, they've got that amount of kids. Whereas if we shot for 10 to 15 right away, well, we don't need four full-time teachers that are teaching 10 to 15 because we don't even know if they need those credits to recover. So why not we go a period a day that works within their, and then it doesn't, uh, that's why I say then it doesn't kill your budget with, we're not adding full F D Es. We're just using what we currently have and we're just kind of strategically placing it and we built some for those kids. So. Went to the conference with Kent.
Came back.
Came back. We actually divided conquer and I'll be like, we didn't double up on, I got to hear his lecture about the rule 90 how it needs to come back. But other than that, um, we kind of split our, and, and went to different things to see what was kind of out there. And the highlight of the trip, I don't know, did you know he's the best buddies with Waltz? He spoke at her last session of the day and he got done speaking, comes walking by, stops, hey, what are you doing? How's it going? Pretty good. Shakes his hand, walks off. Doesn't acknowledge your ass, busts it. And I go, do you know the government? I go, nope. But everyone in here thinks I know. You know, so it was good. It's, uh, despite everything that, you know, what's going on and things that are happening and Shannon will probably touch on whatever. It, it's going well and later on, we're still, I feel for a five, 12 building. We are, we're, we're moving it forward. We're, we're trying to, despite the, some setbacks you might call it or, or some obstacles, if maybe a better word, we're still pushing through and, and still trying to, to, to bring more stuff, more opportunities. Even from, even the fun stuff, even the, you know, get the kids out and do, you know, the powder puffing, you know, all these, we're just trying, you know, and if it goes bad, guess what? We don't do it again. But that's the.
Did you hear about the talent show last Friday in the high school? We had, uh, violinists, classical music. That other kid all the way from that, uh, what does he, what do you call that?
Beatboxing.
Beatboxing to a kid that ate like six hot dogs in 20 seconds.
I did hear some of that.
That was pretty impressive.
It was mustard this time.
Yeah.
Apparently last time there was mustard.
I mean, and the kids, the kids that performed were really talented and good. But the reaction from the student body was they finished, each one finished badly. They were up out of the seat of court. Yeah. Applauding and cheering like amazing. It was, it was really fun to watch. I didn't know it. I mean, they're all high school kids, but it was pretty cool.
And there's times where you just keep your head down and hope no one sees you because you don't know how it's going to wind up. They did, well, I think Tampa ended the splits or, or did some sort of chemistry. Yeah. So, but.
So can this A L P, can this A L P program move forward and can it be implemented in the next year?
That's our goal.
Okay.
That's a goal. That's why Joe's done a lot of work on that and get the application M D E now. So we can be prepared hopefully and cross all the Ts, dot the Is. Like, like Joe said, the state works with you because they want you to be successful too. And Joe, I think has already established that relationship with that person. And so when he's doing this, hopefully that's our goal. Um, when Joe and I talked, I don't know, a month or two ago now, we, we said, hey, is it realistic? I remember asking him, is it realistic that we can jump through enough hoops so we can be ready in the fall? And Joe has gotten a station with the state. That, that's our goal. That's our plan. And hopefully Kent come together with that. You agree, Joe? That was kind of what we're trying.
We're trying. Yeah.
Paper trading, keeping states and ourselves, is there something else that is going to be a major hurdle to prevent your stimulus process down?
No, scheduling will be big. Yeah, for staff. So one of the, the ones that we saw, and I don't want to take up any more of your time, but it was, they, they literally had some certain staff that just came down for that period. They almost had two prep periods, but one of them was dedicated to that. We just build in an ALC period. So does that mean classes get maybe a little bit bigger? Maybe, maybe, maybe not, because we look at some of our electives anyway that maybe have five to eight, you know, that we're okay with it or something different. So I think there's room if we utilize maybe some middle school and some high school together. So it can be a, can be a middle school science teacher, high school social, middle school math, you know, just looking at the numbers. And I think we're going to make it work. Then once it kind of.
Where in that school would that be located?
North Jurassic Park to start.
Amazing.
They got their own bathrooms right there. They would keep separated from.
Yeah, I think as we, you know, you start thinking about, like that you asked, you know, what are some of your big obstacles? It's this guy's own staffing. How does that work? And where is it going to be located? That's kind of what we're thinking. Uh, or because it's got to sink in and it's got, you know, that kind of stuff without them right across the hall. But, yeah, I think as we go through it, I think, you know, Joe's already, you know, talked with Kent too and dialing it in. You know, we're in the elementary stages and trying to, what is this?
And then come up the next time that I've got a report and we can still talk about it. Or we can shut up and do it and send out that application. See, that's how it's, you're talking with Kent. Yeah, hurry up, get it sent. Let's get her going. Yeah. Or we can say, this would be a great idea. And next thing you know, it's 2024 and we don't have anything done. So. I mean, worst case, they say no and we have to whatever. But I think, yeah, realistic talking with Shannon where that was the goal is fall. Let's have the opportunity to do it. So we'll see.
Yeah.
I'm going to duck and.
Yeah. This Katie's on, sure.
Make sure boys safe.
Good luck. Don't we know it?
All right, we're on to six point three board committee reports. I think I have a board committee report. I don't know if anybody else.
I missed the personal meeting or whatever we had last meeting because I was horrible to sick kids. So.
Budget. Yeah, we had a budget committee meeting. Um, so we talked a little bit about the construction budget. We are looking pretty good right now. Um, we're just, Shannon's really making sure that, uh, will we, to make the dollars work. And for the, you know, additional projects we've discussed. Um, so we have those things, but you know, obviously completion is the priority here. But, um, yeah, right now things are looking good and they see it coming in reports and where we're at. The fiscal year 23 budget. Uh, right now the goal is, um, looking at staffing and intervention, some of those, um, you know, how is that going to work on some of the funds that we got for COVID are, um, going away or they're used up. Um, some things that are on the horizon curriculum, you know, we've kind of, this has been something that's kicked on the road a little bit. And so, um, going to take some time to get through all that curriculum, but it's on the horizon. It's expensive. Um, middle school is doing a little bit, we heard a little bit today about, uh, social studies curriculum coming. Um, another thing we're going to have a negotiated coming up as well. So, um, fiscal 23, you know, we're hoping to make some headway, but it's going to be a little bit tight. Um, update from the state of Minnesota. Shannon gave us an update on that. And, um, they're looking to spend some money on education, it looks like. We shall see. Um, if there's more on that that's come up, but, uh, right now, um, looks like a pretty decent increase. So there'd be, there's a lot of priorities that are out there that people want to spend money on. Um, and we'll have to make sure we, just, it's just whatever, whatever we get. Um, we did, we also talked about the retirement incentive. We've had a retirement incentive in the past that we've given to staff that have, um, that have retired. And we are continuing that through this year. And then when we talk about negotiations, we'll likely address that as part of that. It's not something we have to do. It's just something we've done in the past. And that's pretty much.
I did have community report. I was like, God, this got to be one. Talked about community ed, um, when Brittany was on vacation, it's like there was something. Uh, we talked a lot about the Rebel Kids Care Program, um, that's going really super well. Um, she's working on tweaking a few things and she's kind of restructuring it. They felt like they were maybe a little top heavy as far as, um, people trying to be in charge over the summer. So she's got a better system this year, kind of like they were talking about, um, trial and error. So they have a really good outlook on how this summer is going to look. So that opened up recently. Uh, we also talked about our budgets and, uh, how that kind of looks. So she was doing some breakdowns. Uh, she's in the works with that, uh, with our finance side. And then, uh, the community ed, summer recreation stuff is coming off pretty soon. Uh, took a peek at some of those different things that she was working on. Um, she's hoping to get that out to us pretty soon because we have another meeting coming up. So that we can roll that out fairly quickly for, um, the summer. So lots of things, uh, in the works for that.
Does Rebel Kids Care, does that specifically pay for it now?
It's, it actually brings in money.
Brings it.
All right. The other, um, committee reports. All right, we'll go on six point four. Yeah. So the first thing on there is this, and I mentioned it just briefly earlier. The School Board Recognition Week is the week of the 21st to the 25th. So that's next week. Uh, you do have something in front of you. You have a cookie with your name on it. I did not decorate, so thank, you can be thankful for that. And then you also have a certificate of appreciation that's in front of you. So the two that are at work this night will make sure we eat their cookie tomorrow. And we'll mail their appreciation certificate. Uh, anyway, so just thank you to the whole group. Uh, I've said this many times, uh, I just appreciate, um, your willingness to work with me and work through this project that kind of seems to have never ended. And, and, uh, just your patience with me and working with me. I just can't say, oh, I appreciate it. I think you heard it probably from the principal's scooter. That, um, you're just a great group of people and you have your views and you share them. And that's important because that's why you're here and, and I appreciate that too. Um, we are all different. Um, we are all different, including me, and I appreciate that about us too, because then you get a perspective, right, that you didn't sometimes think about. It's one of the issues with our world today is we get stuck on our own side, and that's how we read this, how we listen to it, that's how we see it, and so then it's all we are. Wait a second. There's more to life than just one thing, and so it's good for us to hear it, doesn't mean we have to always follow it or believe it or whatever, but you have to stop and listen to it. So you can at least self-reflect a little bit and say, am I, or is this seem, you know, balance is important, and I think our world is losing balance. And, uh, I think most of the world has common sense, and they step back and go, okay, that's not me, or that's, you know, I'm not way here, way there. And I just appreciate that about this group, that can bring up topics, situations, and whatever they are, and we can have a good discussion about. And so, thank you guys for all you do and the time you put in. And the numerous phone calls or texts or emails I send you to just to make sure you're informed, because I don't want you to be surprised, so that's why it's important for me to share some of that with you, and I don't want to inundate you with the information, because then it's like, oh my God, is this gonna stop? But I also think it's important to at least know what's going on, so. Again, thank you for your commitment to the school, our kids, and in our community, so very much appreciated. Any, so that's that, um, payroll update. So the payroll update is, I will say this has come a long way. Um, Becky Brooke and I, uh, had a meeting today with Omni about the four oh three B, which addresses the, uh, the agreements that the teachers group has. Um, we are very close to getting that all dialed in, uh, they have come to the IRS audit. They've shared with some information with us. Tomorrow, I'm sitting with Becky and Brooke to put out a report that everything that's been part of this four oh three B and Omni and what, because they're gonna share with us too. Their analogy and kind of their summary of what's happened, uh. Almost everybody had corrected here in January, uh, with some missed deposits that happened in twenty one. They've explained how that works and how it goes, you know, so we'll get into the weeds in that. HSA was gone through and a lot of those were corrected, the FSA, Becky was going through that today to finalize it, because there's more people that take that. The life dental vision, uh, AFWAT, health insurance, that has all been dialed in now too, and those adjustments are being made in our current payrolls. I think we're getting very close to getting it all cleaned up. Uh, when we talk about the the deposits and whatnot, and the file transfers to Omni to go into four oh three B, there's still some individual situations there, because there's two hundred and seven lives and X number have four oh three B, and so that's the thing we're still trying to finalize. The audits happened for overall, but there's still some individual disc calculations, so. Before we get too detailed in with them, I wanna make sure I have the right answer for Nicole, for David, for, you know what I mean? And so, um, we're getting very close, I will be sending out a message tomorrow at some point to the whole staff, so they can see and feel and check on some of these things, so. We're getting very close, and I just appreciate, if you look in our, uh, bills tonight, you can notice that every mark says two bills in there, and obviously one of them that's a little bit bigger than the other is Lisa spending a ton of hours over a welcome going through each individual. So that's gonna be a front-loaded expense that now is slowly gonna just go away, because all the work, you know, it's like anything, right? It's like Trevor said tonight, hey, open up doors and okay, we gotta get up to speed, there's a lot of office hours to go on the front end, and now I think we're gonna take a chance, so. That's, uh, that's good, so I'm encouraged about that. Insurance coverage, just so you know, I I have a meeting this week with Greg Johnson, our current agent. And renewals and buildings and square footage changes and adding a skid steer and getting a suburban or we're gonna get a Ford Expedition here, get rid of something, and so just got an update, just like anybody right at your house, you update your insurance. So I'm meeting with him on Thursday, uh, just so you know, I'm also meeting with, uh, Baller tomorrow, they have a representative, they wanna at least show us what they could do for us. They said I don't have plans to change right now, but I'll just wait. So we're gonna shut that out to a moment and see what happens, uh, that's a meeting tomorrow, and then Greg is on Thursday. So just to let you know, just so you know, with everything that just happened last week here, I did talk to Greg about turning in a claim, uh, on the heat issue that we had. Uh, we're not sure if it's gonna qualify for a claim, but I most certainly wanna turn it in. If you remember in the past, we had some statute of limitations that found at one size, so this job that we could have had turned into insurance, um, personnel, and if it would have been, it would have been covered. But they said, well, you can't help because, just like anything else, statute of limitations ran out on us, so. So it's an easy phone call. Uh, and so whether or not this turns into a claim or not, I'm gonna for sure report it instantly, and so we don't miss out on it. If there's something there, so just so you know, I did do that. Uh, construction update, I think you and, uh, again, if you wanna go down and get the shot after or stop by anywhere, I'd be happy to share with you, uh, the one thing that's not on here, um, that I wanted to talk about, and in fact, Rebel Kids Care, just briefly. Uh, I talked to Tracy, I talked to Brittany, and when Wayne returns from his vacation, he can sit down and visit about doing, um, and I think, Nicole, you were there that night, only a hundred and twenty four, community ed meeting, we talked just briefly about having a daycare all year round, uh, it's probably for three and four-year-olds. Only because those are the kids that we need in preschool, and it can help increase our numbers, because as we know, most families know, parents both work. And, okay, I can't, my job doesn't, I can't get over it, I'm gonna pick up a kid, now what am I doing? And so this might help us with our enrollment, we want kids to be in school, and we think we have the space in Denver, so we're working through that, and what that might look like. So at least our three and four-year-olds drop out in the morning, they have preschool that day, right, we walk them down the hall, after preschool, they come back to daycare, and then moms and dads can take them up. And their day is done. So we are gonna look into that, um, as we stated, Rebel Kids Care is successful, it's been, uh, like the summer, it just exploded again, and we already had enrollment, and it just, so. It's working, we wanna continue to serve our families and our community, and obviously there was a need, and hopefully we can continue to help them back, so. That's, well, I have a guess, any questions, that's for me? So Baller is actually just helping, they're in the middle of them, if you know, so they're helping us get over guys. Uh, and they got operating holes in the same base, so they work with those companies, so we don't spend all this time. The other thing that's been really nice with this payroll situation is they've just done a ton of work, um, for us, talking to Stanford, talking about the healthcare pieces, the vision part, the life, and the health PD, um, which I'm learning some other good news, which I can share um, later too, about some of that and the district paying for it, so they've done a lot of work. Um, yeah, so they're kind of the middle man to help support us. Yep, more healthcare, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, yeah, just, and so I'm gonna add the questions too, that's our first thought, right? Uh, and then they go, oh, you know, that does change us, we can get you an answer right away. It's just, there's so much more fish. Other questions? I should say, I told you, I should say, um, it's, Wayne was here a month ago, sharing great report, heard a lot of positive from you guys, like, wow. He just, he just did a great job, and we'd love to see what's happening, the school and Brittany are really doing some nice things. Tonight, you're Kent and Phil, I just, I'll just be selfish, I'm just super proud of each school, each site. You heard what they think of Katie, um, it's just really coming together, I think, as this year's gone on, it's all gotten better. Um, and so as we plan into next year, to Brittany's question earlier, it's like, okay, what are we doing, how do we look for next year? That is really, they're just a great team, so when I met with them last week to talk about next year, and some of the people, whether they're, they're all retirees, what they look like. Um, they love kids. That's their focus, and how are we gonna serve them better, or how could we serve them better, and that's the just across the board, I just couldn't be happier with the group that I get to work with, so. Now, Tracy, John, Shannon in the kitchen, Eileen, these other directors too, I think we've heard it up about them too, they're just I'm I'm just very fortunate to have a great team that loves kids and wants
Mentioned Shannon in the kitchen.
Yeah.
My kids have mentioned probably five or six times on our own dinner table, how wonderful her food is now. I don't know what she did or what she changed or
She sprinkled a little she-shan, because on the, the heat channel, she's the she-shan, and I can't sprinkle a little she.
I don't, I don't know if she ordered something different, but I've heard, um, very positive things, and I, not that we can hear negative things, we just didn't really care much about food in general, and like, there's some seasoning on the vegetables that the kids just want. I don't know what it's about, anyways, she's
She
Doing a remarkable job, and I guess they see her sometimes, and she's happy.
She's a, she is a
I don't know what she does, like, that's
If you hear her, she's, she's, she's a wonderful person, she loves food, she loves kids, and she wants to die together. And she's, she's already met with Joe, she's already talking about the FFA, hope to do that, and this farm, this, you know, I talked about that, and a grant she wrote for seventy one thousand dollars. She met with local people, and so if you look at her bill signing, you see the bronze, uh, LLC is in there, that's the farm we're buying, the B front, yeah. It's, yeah, she's, she is, she is a wonderful leader as well, so. Just wanna say All righty, we'll move on to step one. Um, regular minutes, minutes from last week. Comments, questions, all those in favor, say aye. Uh, number eight consented and, uh, uh, eight point one claims approved the bills to date. Um, what do we have? Thank you very
Big time. Uh, nine hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and one.
Okay. Um, the treasury budget report. Just remember, uh, you look at this percentages, now we're in the middle of February, so January should have been at fifty percent, uh, we're currently at forty seven, that's a good thing. Like, you guys know that too, with some of those other funds in there, um, each percent is worth again, if you look at the big budget, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand, so. Each percent, so give you an idea where we're at, so that's good too, and that's important as we recover the budget. Then we have a reservation, uh, for Casey Poizl, a very professional, effective February thirteenth. Uh, and motion. Uh, motion by Nicole, uh, we have a second.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those, oh, carries on to number nine point one. Uh, resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reduction programs and positions. Do you wanna have a motion? Nicole, we have a second.
You need a second.
And so this is something we do every year.
Yeah.
Um, we, you know, we have to do it in order to maintain our flexibility. Yeah, it kinda comes back to what you heard both Joe Kent and I talked about tonight, that we're looking at next year, what's it look like? And have some retirees, which people leave, so obviously that's putting us already in a little bit of a line. And so that's where this is important, that we have that flexibility, whether it's changes or Do you have any questions or other comments? Or I'm hearing on all those in favor. So, so we just need to give a real call, which will be there too.
Uh, member Nicole Reno introduced the following resolution, moved this adoption on February thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons thereof. Whereas the financial condition of the school district dictates that the school board must reduce expenditures immediately. And whereas the reduction in expenditure must include discontinuance of positions or discontinuance of or curtailment of programs, and whereas the determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed, in which teachers may be placed in unrequested leave of absence without pay or benefits and affecting discontinuance of positions. Be resolved by the school board of independent school district twenty one sixty four as follows. That the school board hereby directs the superintendent of schools and administration to consider consider discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures and make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions. Motion for adoption. The foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member Amy Johnson and upon vote taken, being taken.
Well done. All right, well, the real call, Nicole.
Aye.
Myself, I, Amy.
Aye.
Brittany.
Aye.
On nine point two, uh, this year, twenty four, twelve calendars, you have a little packet as well. Kind of sneak review, um, last time as well. I'm gonna have a motion. Motion by Amy, do you have a second? Second by Mike. I, I questioned on the school candidate.
Even though there was some questions, um, from a few different people, um, one of the ones that I'd heard um, specifically was why we were looking at having um, just regular snow days instead of e-learning days, and I know I personally had a conversation with Shannon about this, and um, from my perspective, I think it's, um, more beneficial for our kids to have that time for creative outlets and, um, giving them an opportunity to relive some of those wonderful things I thought we had from our childhood, like waking up and watching the ticker tape. They get it a little more quick, because they can just get the phone call with the tip touch, but, um, I think that that's um, great, especially like in elementary, my personal, uh, feelings are that when we make a packet in August, something that might happen in November through March. It's really not that content-specific or all of that effective, um, so then all it does is cause parents to come home and try to help them through that, um, at homework, um, which they could probably get already at the beginning of the week. So I personally believe, um, that it's what's best for our students, um, even if it doesn't, um, jive with everybody's feelings, that is, that is my personal
Yeah, just so you know, true, I've had some staff share with me, uh, middle school staff, uh, I was at a S I P meeting, and they brought up some thoughts and concerns, uh, or questions about it, they're great, they're, they're good questions, it was a lot of similar reading, like you just talked about, Nicole, it's like, hey, seems back, seems where they were going backwards, we had to be, we thought that's something that we got from COVID that that actually isn't working, and I said, you know, I think that's true in some senses, and absolutely not in others, so, I think it depends on who you talk to, right? Depends on some teachers, some teachers, it's easy to set something up, mostly for high school students, and some middle school. More difficult in the elementary, and how do you grade it, and what's the value of it, and and I said, I think the goal here, as we worked through this with union leadership that I did, we talked about trying to split the different, right? We're not gonna have six of these, we're like, we're gonna try to do two or three, so we're gonna go three, and then the glory does happen after day three. This year, we have to make way in December, so that, yikes, is this gonna be a year that we got blessed in February this week, I'm already have people telling me that, you know, even though Wednesday might get interesting, and it might so that would be day three there, and 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 some of the other things were, you know, when is your first makeup on? Well, it's that Friday before Christmas, right? Well, um, you know, I can't plan everybody's schedule, and all teachers plan to trip, and I said, oh, right now, that would be the day I wouldn't plan a trip on yet. Why? Because you might have it as a school day. There's a lot of times, and again, I'm not everybody does them, and that's, but the calendars, the calendar, we've got a lot of things, is it the singing learning day, or are you on a trip, or you're not on a trip? I don't know, one of the other things that was brought up was, so if it happens on the twenty first, we have a storm. Do we have a makeup day the next day? You know, uh, I don't know, that's something, I guess, you know, I said that actually the board, we can make a decision anytime with this calendar in regards to that to say, hey, we've made it through the middle of December, if we have one next week, or we could say, if it happens a week out that, we could say yeah, we won't use that one, we'll kick it to the next one. I mean, that's something we could decide, it's like, you guys, if you have seven or eight storm days, you can decide, should we make it up or not? If we have enough contact days, we don't have, or we could say, yeah, we, I think we should, and that's the board's decision, you get to decide that, so. Those are some of the other conversations I've had, I think, um, in the realm, they're okay, they affect everybody differently, uh, we work really hard, or, um, with the union leadership, and I think they try to do too, they're gonna work this out, and I think it's, it's a good mix, I guess, is it perfect? Probably not, and again, it depends on where you are. Any other questions or thoughts or things you heard?
Uh, I, I appreciate, I guess, I, Greg, Nicole, I think you know, it's, for some kids, you learn more, it's just fine, but I think for, uh, well, it's part of my own team. Uh, a bit of a challenge to make sure that they're actually doing what they should be doing, so, um, I welcome that.
Yeah, the other thing I think that's important to your point there, David, is that we're gonna meet with these kids, they're gonna be in person instead of not having Instead of not having it, right?
Yeah.
The other thing is we're doing it in the middle of the school year, not in June or the end of May, which is like, oh, yeah, are we gaining anything? So I'm hoping that that is, is better for kids.
I did hear the, some staff say that they requested that it get to the end of the year. Um, but I expressed to them that I felt that that was not, um, in the best interest of our kids, cause I don't think. Adding at the end of the school year benefits many people, I think a lot of kids have checked out and would check out wrapping up, um, at that point. And just eager to get in the couple of weeks of summer weekend every year. Okay, a couple months, but it feels like a couple weeks. So I just feel like, um, I, I thought this was a great balance of, of schedule and.
Yeah, I think we'll learn.
Any questions, comments? Hearing them, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign. Nine point three extended day field trip, this is for the DGF baseball team on April twenty first to the twenty second, do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by, I have a second.
Second.
Second, thank you. Uh, I assume this is just for overnight or?
Yeah, they're gonna do a little team building and take down a twin screen to it, if I remember correctly. It's been a while since I looked at this, all days, but yeah, it's kind of a team building, I think, and they have the funds to do it.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Nine point four, non-certified contract, this is for the materials and it's per professional. Starting at eighteen dollars fifty-nine cents an hour effective February twenty seventh, point three, do I have a motion? Motion by the team, you have a second? Any questions, comments? Or none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, ten point one, next board meeting is February twenty seventh, and this will be in the DGF community room, our regular location. Um, and then we'll have a facilities transportation committee meeting right after that. All right, the meeting is over at seven fourteen.